Good morning to everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council's study session for the morning of September the 16th. I will note that all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda is to review the agenda for our Monday council meeting. Council, do you know off the bat if there's anything on this agenda that you'd like additional information about? Currently, nothing's off of the consent agenda. Looks like it pretty -- yes, I'm sorry.
I'd like an overview on items three F, no, three E and three F about the use of CDBG dollars for LED lights for our neighborhoods.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Mayor, members of the council. So the items that are on the agenda, item three E and three F, are to purchase both smart nodes, which is under item three E. That's the smart technology that allows our streetlights to talk to, or us to talk to our streetlights, allows for us to manage how they're working. It allows us the ability to dim the streetlights. Item's three F, item three F is buying fixtures. So we were approached a few months back if there were any viable projects within the low, moderate income areas for the use of CDBG funds. So we'll be using in-house forces, so these contracts are just by material. What I will say is within these parts of the city, the upgrade to LED has gone over very well. Usually, we'll go in and replace one or two streetlights if one is out, and we'll have people asking when the rest of the neighborhood is going to be upgraded. It just shows that with the LED upgrades, folks in different parts of the city react differently. But what we've found in areas where these funds would apply, that the people are like great, because the perception is that there's more light. There's actually not, it's just different, it's a different color, but the perception is that it provides added safety, and that's why we've gotten very good response.
So without approving the funds, were these areas on a schedule? Are we just accelerating the schedule? Or if we didn't employ the funds now, what would that look like?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I would say we're accelerating, and we have a seven-year program to upgrade all of the existing high-pressure sodium lights in the city to LED, but this will allow us to speed up within these areas.
So, and I think we should also point out, this is an intention too, and we'll let Michelle speak to this, is these are dollars that, you know, eventually, we would fund these out of our street transportation dollars, but because they're CBG funds, excuse me, Michelle, kind of, let's talk about why we chose this project because of the need to spend CBG dollars. Why don't you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm really glad that you asked this question, because the use of our CDBG funds are very critical in our community. As you're aware from the presentations I've made in the past, 65% of our funds have to go to non-public service activities. Those are the bricks and mortar of the community. That's really what the Community Development Block grant was intended for. And we also have to meet our spending ratios. So when we approached the department regarding any kind of projects, we were looking for shovel-ready projects that would help us expand the funds, as well as to meet the community needs within those low-mod area neighborhoods.
Michelle, talk about maybe why these funds are available, because there's kind of a fallout here, that you're trying to meet your spend-down ratio, but talk a little bit about that.
Okay, great, thank you. In the past, we've had several non-public service projects that have either been canceled or have not gone through for various reasons, because it's very onerous with the reporting requirements. And so in order for us to continue to spend those dollars down, we need to find those viable projects. So it really assists us with the CDBG fund expenditure, as well as to improve the neighborhoods within those low-mod income areas.
And this is from the, what are the COVID dollars on the --
Oh, no, no, these are, these are our, yeah, go ahead.
CDBG.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, these are not the COVID dollars, these are our regular CDBG funds.
Okay, these are the regular, not the extra that we receive.
Right, no, this is the annual allocation that we get. That's why when we talk about the spending ratio and being able to spend projects, or spend the money down, that's what that's about. The, yeah, we apologize, because there has been a lot of references to CARES dollars, and there's a CDBG CARES dollar allocate, right, or something like that.
Yes.
But this is not that. So those dollars, this is not taking away, let's be very clear, this is not taking away allocations that we've set aside for rental assistance, for utility assistance, and a matter of fact, these dollars wouldn't be able to be spent for that, because they have to go to that 65%, which is more the project-based. And unfortunately, that's also sometimes the most challenging, just because the lead time to do a project, all the environmental studies that have to take place, to spend that money. And so using, when we get to the point where we're kind of falling behind, or projects have been canceled, then Michelle is able to go and do projects like this that we think, certainly, that goes into these neighborhoods' benefits, the neighborhoods from public safety standpoint, but allows her to spend it quickly also.
That's absolutely correct, thank you.
Will we be able to accomplish this within, this is a multi-year project, correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'd have to check on the schedule. It's about 2,100 lights that would be funded if the contract amendments are approved, so I'm sure we could do that over the next year. We're going to be, we're replacing about 7,000 lights a year citywide, so it should not be that hard to fit this into our regular schedule.
I do like that it helps us achieve, get into our climate action plan and achieve those goals a little quicker. I would like to maybe have an update on our schedule of dollars that we approved and how they have shifted into the different buckets, or different projects, from what we approved was, I guess, in the spring, whenever it was.
Sure, that product, you're kicking off that, what you're soliciting now for, to start that, I'm trying to think how we could combine that with, when you're coming to council next.
So, Mayor, Vice Mayor, we will be coming to council on the 30th for the CDBG CV dollars, so that's the coronavirus for CDBG.
So let's not do it then, because that'll confuse us.
Yeah, it'll be very confusing.
I have a hard time keeping the buckets straight.
Other than that, we don't have any other dates scheduled.
Okay, we'll find a date to come forward, but, so to kind of clarify, because remember, some of these dollars are approved by council, it may take, it shouldn't take much more than a year or two to spend, but sometimes they do, but we can try to come up with a way to summarize those expenditures.
Absolutely. If I could just make one quick comment on that, just, none of the projects that were approved for the last fiscal year were changed because of these dollars, so everything still went through, this is just in addition.
In addition.
Yeah, these could have been projects that were canceled, maybe in
A couple of years ago, they were approved, and they haven't gone through for various reasons.
She gives, I mean, Michelle works with whoever it is that's supposed to have that project, and so it may take a while for them to figure out, it's not going to happen and fall out. It doesn't happen that quickly, so we try to
So we're not confined within a fiscal year.
No, we have dollars, that's what, the dilemma for us, right, we can have projects that we've been working on for a couple of years, and then they just fall out, or someone decides they're not going to do it, but now we've got to scramble to spend it, because that starts accumulating her, I don't know what you call it, your reserve, your balance,
Our line of credit.
Yeah, a line of credit, and as that builds up, and it's not being spent down, then that gets the attention of HUD. They're like, well, you've got all this money, you obviously aren't meeting your ratios, and so.
Okay, well, great, thank you for the overview, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
RJ, I just
Excuse me, before you take off, yeah, looks like you've done such a good job.
I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah.
The light bulb just went on.
Took a while.
So this contract's just to purchase the fixtures, the lighting equipment.
That's correct.
This is all, the light bulbs basically.
The labor's in-house.
Yeah, the labor's in-house. I just want to differentiate between the two. You're just purchasing the items to do the light upgrades, and then we have a contractor come in yourself for another.
Well, if you recall, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, a while back, when we brought forward the Streetlight Master Plan, we decided it was significantly less expensive if we used staff through the installation. So these contracts, again, are just by material.
There's a monitoring system to that.
Yes, that's part of the Smart Cities Initiative, which allows us to talk to the streetlights and allows us to dim them in overnight areas in certain parts of the city.
This was, we call it the Dave Luna Initiative.
Yes.
Well, he had especially a situation where we needed to figure that out.
I believe Mr. Reddy has a question.
Yeah, a quick question, do we have a map of where these fixtures, are we practically changing them, or, I know before is that if somebody calls, so you end up changing them and maybe change some of the other ones that are in the neighborhood, but is this a proactive initiative, and then a map of where this, these will fall?
Mayor, Councilmember Reddy, two parts to your question. First, we do have a map that we've worked with Michelle's staff on where specifically the CDBG-funded lights can go within the low, moderate income areas. As far as how we replace our lights, it's both proactive and reactive. It's reactive in the sense that if a light is out in a neighborhood, we typically won't repair that light, we'll just replace it with an LED. We'll then try to replace lights on the same electrical circuit while we're there, so that's sort of the reactive side, because it just doesn't make sense to spend money fixing fixtures, you know, that we're going to be replacing anyway. Aside from that, we also are proactive, where we're working throughout, you know, working out a plan throughout the city. So it's kind of a mix, because since we're using in-house staff, they've got their day-to-day duties, and as time allows, we're going to whole neighborhoods and making the upgrades.
Given the need to focus on low, moderate-income neighborhoods, is this an opportunity to be more proactive in neighborhoods that could use more LED lights that you mentioned?
Mayor, Councilmember Reddy, yes. For this, specifically for the CDBG-funded lights, yes, this will be all proactive, where we'll go in and we'll do whole neighborhoods or whole sections of our neighborhood at a time. It doesn't make sense to do those one-off, we'll just go in as our schedule allows and do whole strings of lights at a time.
Mr. Luna.
Just real quick, I've been on the CCD Committee for eight years now, so this isn't new. I mean, we've done in the past where we have projects that just didn't come, couldn't come through, couldn't complete the project, so we had, and we know that we are confined, and we've got to spend the money immediately, I think this is a good use of that, so I'm definitely in support of this. Eventually, are we going to add Wi-Fi on these?
That's a question that Mr. Cutright can answer better than I can.
Yeah, Mr. Travis is back, they're smiling, we're coming back with ideas on that, yes.
That would be cool if we could do that, especially in those areas where we have low and moderate.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Count Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask a question on four F, we're selling some city property northeast corner of Stapley and Main Street, and how that transpired. I know we don't sell property very often, but when we can, we're, we must have had some great offers to sell this.
Oh, hi, Kim.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Yes, so we did receive two interested parties to purchase the Mervens. If you've been here a while in Mesa, you'll know that as the old Mervens site, they're at that corner. We entertained those LOIs, and we ended up going to the highest and best purchase price with the two of them, and we received the highest bid amount of $6.9 million.
So, Kim, talk a little bit about, this is just beginning, what's the, give us the timeframe for this purchase, as far as the time they have to do due diligence and anticipated closing on that.
Yes, the terms of the sale is 70 days, 60-day feasibility, and 10-day close after that. They have deposited $250,000 earnest money in escrow, and so within that 60-day feasibility, they'll do their due diligence, they'll, they do need to get a rezoning for the type of use they want to do on the property, and also get some restrictions removed from the property that is with the adjacent property owner, which is Food City or Bashes.
And Kim, maybe a little historical perspective, the purchase, the city's purchase price on this, and any income we received since we've held this property?
Yeah, so we purchased it for $2.7, but at the time, we were starting the Gilbert Road Light Rel Extension Project, and we needed to acquire some right-of-way off the front. And so because we knew the FTA was paying for the right-of-way, we wanted to make sure that the current owner conveyed the property to us, so we could use those dollars, and that was around $69,000, $70,000. So the end was $2.630 purchase price. And then during November of, or October of 2016 through May of 2019, Valley Metro and the light rail contractor used Mervens for their offices, and the rents we collected there was around $436,000, $436,000 for that rent, so.
And then just maybe last thing, Kim, what was the most recent appraisal on this property that you recall?
It appraised in May for $4 million.
One final question, the zoning is not contingent on the sale of the land, correct?
It is not.
I mean, there's no strings attached or anything?
As is.
No assumptions that future, or even future zoning, yeah, right, for future zoning.
Good.
I think that was a good deal.
If you could, if we could, while we're talking about good deals, I think since we're in the neighborhood, could she just tell you a little bit about four E?
Oh, Dobie Recker, Salinas District.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I am very excited to sell this one. We've owned this one since, I think, 1979, and then we did a trade with Alta Mesa Developer to put us on the corner, we used to be off the corner for a future fire station site, that ended up not needing to be at that location. So over the years, we've tried to sell it many times, but currently, we have a buyer, and we should close by October, October 15th of this year. We paid $45,000 for it, and it auctioned off at $435,000.
That's great, great. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you for doing that, I mean, it's a great deal, you know, we have the new public safety facility that's going to be built on power and brown anyway, so that takes care of providing services in that area, so. And I did speak to Mr. Anderson yesterday, and talked to him about the project, and minimal resistance complaints from the neighbors, so, so thank you so much, this is
You're very welcome. They are very excited, very excited to do this development, so.
Thank you, Kim.
All right, well, fingers crossed that the deal closes.
Yep.
Both of them. Mr. Thompson.
My question was on 3G, sorry, Scott. I have to ask you, in the second paragraph, it says the increase is needed for upcoming projects. What kind of upcoming projects do we have that, that fall outside the CIP?
Wait, are you on 3G on the hazardous?
Yeah.
So this could be just unanticipating that you're going to have?
Well, it says unanticipated, but then it also says the increase is needed for upcoming projects.
Oh, oh, I see, I'm sorry.
So I wanted to know what are the upcoming projects?
What other CIP projects would you anticipate you would need?
Well, it's just, so the unanticipated projects that we had, good morning, Mayor and Council, sorry, the unanticipated projects that we had, one of them was, there was a storage tank that we hit for the development that's happening with ASU and the park, just right here.
Well, hold on, that's the Plaza, that's the city. Yeah, the Plaza, we found a underground storage tank.
An underground storage tank that was there.
A gas station must have been.
Yeah, even though we had done environmental site assessments, once you start digging underground, sometimes you find things that you didn't anticipate finding. In addition to that, we had a couple of spills that happened at different locations, that we had some rather large cleanups that we had to do, so. This is also a contract that's used by many different departments, so an example is the Police Department uses it for berm remediation, so the shooting range that they shoot at, what the bullets will stick into that berm, but they need to be pulled back out, and we reface it, and this is a contract that we use for that. The Energy Resources Group will use this contract a lot also, and then the Environmental Group. So that's why we're looking at increasing it. This is also something, though, is we do our regular disposals from department as part of the Climate Action Plan, that we're really trying to focus with the departments to understand, is there non-hazardous materials that we can purchase? Are there purchasing policies? Are we purchasing too much of material if we're having to dispose of it because it's gone out of spec? So we're really, the Environmental Group is looking at trying to focus on reducing the amount of the hazardous materials, but we're just hoping to increase this contract, because we're anticipating also that there might be some other stuff that pops up.
Well, I guess I'm stuck on the increases needed for upcoming projects, and so, I mean, what you identified as ongoing projects?
Right.
What is, what are the upcoming projects that aren't on CIP, or?
Well, I don't think we specifically, he's thinking of a project, something that he, like, he didn't know about, the underground storage tank at the Plaza, so that's
So it's probably a sentence that probably should have been
Yeah, well, it's upcoming incidents, maybe is a better word. I think they're thinking of it as a project, but it's any unforeseen circumstances where we may need this, and that's
That's what I was wanting to verify, because it seems like it's more of a language thing.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Because I was like, wait a minute, if there's upcoming projects that we need to take care of, then those should probably be in the CIP.
Hopefully, we'll know those, and those would be handled without, those would be handled as part of that project contract. This is in
It's unforeseen.
This is unanticipated, this is emergency, this is just a bill to draw down, and I think what we're saying is, we need the additional amount, so if something happens, we can get them out quickly, we don't have to go through a current process. Yeah, I apologize for that, that's, it is not that we know, have a, we know of a CIP project that's going to need this right now.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Other questions regarding Monday's agenda? Mr. Brady, anything else you'd like to let us know about Monday's agenda?
I think you, we covered all the ones we were thinking about, so.
Okay, thank you. That being the case, the next item on our agenda, item two, is a presentation on the 2022 Employee Benefits and Wellness Programs.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Terry, why don't you have everybody introduce themselves first?
Yes, good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for having HR here to present on the employee benefits program. We are, let me begin with introductions. First of all, my name is Teri Overby, and I'm the HR Director. Immediately next to me, I have Jan Ashley, who is our employee benefits administrator, and on the end, I have Kristen Muse, who is our wellness manager.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm really, really pleased to be here today to describe to you, give some highlights of our 2022 employee benefit programs, which astonishingly and increasingly are available to over 3,800 of our employees, more than 2,100 of our retirees, and more than 8,400 eligible family members who are eligible under the various programs. All of our current benefit programs, and many of the current vendors and administrators and insurers, have been renewed or are continuing under current contracts in 2022. There are no reductions in benefit levels contemplated, and continued funding from city departments, contributions, employee and retiree premiums, state retirement plan, state retirement system subsidies, and other third-party administrative credits, subsidies, and rebates. These ongoing vendor-partner relationships include Cigna for our medical plan, Delta Dental of Arizona for our dental plans, Vision Service Plan or VSP for our vision plans, CompSite for our employee assistance programs, MetLife for life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance, UNUM for our short-term disability voluntary insurance programs, and of course, OnSite Care, our medical professionals at our employee health and wellness center. We also have some new vendor partners that will be, that are under implementation right now for a go-live of January 1st. These new administrators reflect competitive RFP marketing projects that we entertained during the course of this year, and focused on service and cost containment opportunities. Our prescription drug program with the city's medical plans is moving from CVS/Caremark and SilverScrept to MedImpact and Vibrant RX. MedImpact will provide the services for active and non-Medicare-eligible retirees and their respective covered families. Vibrant RX will provide prescription drug services for Medicare-eligible retirees and individuals under our city-sponsored Medicare Part D and WRAP programs. Vibrant RX and MedImpact are affiliated organizations, they're not separated, they're separated organizations, but they're affiliated with each other. No change in benefit levels for these prescription drug programs, our co-insurance percentages for employee out-of-pocket expenses will remain the same, copay amounts will remain the same, and we'll experience a very similar pharmacy network across the nation to that that we've experienced today. And we'll have an increase in availability of 90-day supply of prescriptions at all of those network pharmacies, whereas they've been restricted to a certain segment of the pharmacies up until now. There'll also be a new MedImpact mail order and specialty drug service pharmacy available, and most importantly, and I mention this for all of us, there'll be new prescription drug ID cards for everyone to receive at the end of the year and get into action with using the first part of next year. Along with the MedImpact Vibrant RX contract arrangements that we've made, we will have a new innovative service provider in this prescription drug arena called Paid Health, and Paid Health will deliver specialty drug advocacy services that help our members receive an opportunity for alternative funding for those very high-cost specialty drugs.
Excuse me, Mr. Freeman.
Sorry to interrupt, but, you know, I said in the meeting, and I think this component is extremely important dollar-wise, the percentage of people, employees using this versus the cost threshold for this, could you explain that a little bit, Jan?
Yeah, Councilmember Freeman, approximately between 1% and 2% of our member population would be in need of specialty drugs at any point in time, and the purchase of those specialty drugs, along with those member copayments, is approximately 46% of the entire spend on the prescription drug side of the equation. So the specialty drug arena is a fast-evolving, extremely high cost, and the pipeline is almost exclusively in that arena of new, new-to-market opportunities in the specialty drug area. So it's an area where we have to do whatever we can to ensure that we get the best cost containment opportunities, not only for the member, but for the plan as well. It has a huge impact on our total spend.
I just thought the Council should hear that for our employees, thank you.
So the specialty drug advocacy services that we'll, we've contracted with Paid Health to provide, will allow those members who need those drugs to receive those drugs under alternative funding mechanisms. We will require that the members participate in that program. If they're not found to be eligible for that program, then they return to the prescription drug benefit levels that we have under our current programs. But if they don't choose to participate, unfortunately, they would then have a no-coverage scenario under the prescription drug plans. So there's a pretty big incentive for those members to participate in the program. Another third-party administrative change that we'll be making in 2022 is in our flexible spending account administration environment. So our flexible spending accounts are very popular with our employees for health and dependent care expense reimbursement. This change that we will make is from Connect Your Care, which is now known as Optum Financial with a recent merger that occurred, to a new organization that we'll be contracting with called Navia Benefit Solutions. And this will provide a few service enhancements for employees under these respective benefit programs. That will include that the debit cards that are available for use on the healthcare spending side of the equation will also be able to be used on the dependent care side of the equation as well. There'll also be a new opt-in service under the new administrator that will make claims generation alerts more amenable to the employee and produce less work for them to get their claims filed under the program. We'll continue to use our current FSA administrator, Connect Your Care or Optum Financial, to finish up the 2021 scenario. There is always a three-month time period at the end of a calendar year where our plans allow that you can finalize all your claims from the year before and take care of last-minute details, et cetera. So that will be the one perhaps hiccup in the equation, in that employees will have to remember, I go to Navia for my 2022 activity, and I continue with Connect Your Care for my 2021 activity. We've got heavy communications around that, though, so we don't think that's going to be a problem. The big question on The big question on the table for all employees when they're thinking about their benefit programs for the following year is, how much is it going to cost? What changes are occurring there? So we're very fortunate that we have, we have, for our medical plan premiums, we've got a recommended rate increase that's approximately six percent for active employees that will result in a nine-dollar to thirty-six-dollar per month change or increase in the premiums that the employees are paying if they're in the choice and the copay medical plans, which are our eighty percent and almost one-hundred percent coverage plans. We still are very pleased to, to report that we continue to have our basic medical plan available, and that is a plan where the city has, in past and in present and future, is contributing a hundred percent of the funding for that particular plan. So there are no employee contributions for that plan that occur each, each pay period. And that plan has indeed risen to being our highest active enrollment plan throughout the city, with still a very high enrollment in our choice plan and then a much reduced enrollment in our copay plan because it is the most expensive plan for our employees to be in.
But Jan, just quickly, just kind of clear, just share that, that's a very good point. So we have over, little over fifteen-hundred employees who are in the basic choice plan. So they have no premium cost to them, but, you know, they, they have to pick up a much higher, if they have to access-
They have greater out-of-pocket costs, yes.
Yeah. And then the choice plan has twelve-hundred-and-sixty is the last number I had, less than thirteen-hundred. And those are the ones that are rece, see, they're seeing, if you're in the family plan, about an eighteen-dollar a month increase.
Correct.
And then the copay choice, that's the least amount of participation of just over eight-hundred employees in there, and that's where you're seeing the, the highest increase in the per month. And again, why is that, Jan? Why does it fall out that way?
Because the, it, the city contributes the same amount to each plan regardless of the choice that the employee makes. So if the, if the employee is choosing to, to buy into a, an upgraded or a higher benefit level plan, then they pay a little bit more on their side for that, that buy-up opportunity. And as a result of the fact that the copay plan is our highest experience-rated plan, that means that there's much, that's, there's a bigger differential between what the city's contributing and what the employee would contribute to that total cost of that plan.
So that rate goes up depending on the, kind of the richness of the, of the plan that you're participating in. So it's kind of a risk-reward, risk kind of cost assessment. So that's why that scale, you see it go from nine to thirty-six. It just, employees get to choose, kind of based on their kind of health risk profile, they can decide which one of those plans they want to go in. But there is a differential in the cost. And remember, it's not just what the employee pays, the city is also contributing its eighty percent to those costs also. Regardless of which plan you're in, the city's committed to the eighty percent.
It's the same dollar amount that the city is contributing to each of those plans. Some of the financial considerations that are behind what the, the recommendations for the increases include the national and city medical cost trend increases that are approximately seven to eight percent. And we took a look at claims volatility that's occurred in 2021 and beyond due to our almost two years of pandemic activity and increasing utilization and spend that's occurring for the previously postponed care that might have severity increases going forward. So we're trying to contemplate that there were going to have some increases in our health, health plan costs as a result of those sorts of activities. And then we've also done extensive analysis with OMB and our fund balance projections, and those do indeed support that a six percent rate increase on the active employees is an appropriate and fiscally responsible method of operation.
So Mayor and Counsel, just like the general fund, this, the Employee Benefits Trust Fund has its own specific reserves, and we try to manage those also, and making sure that we have sufficient reserves in there to be able to make payments out. And, and it, it does change from year to year, and so we're always monitoring the future cost and what the impacts are having. Some years we'll have maybe not necessarily as frequent amount of visits, but we'll see maybe spikes in severity, can sometimes change that. We, if we have some very significant claims on the health benefits program, that can certainly have an impact. So we're, we try to monitor those over the historical perspective and then kind of watching trends going out, but at the same time, always trying to maintain that we have reserves sufficient to absorb any significant changes. And there are years where we can see some dramatic fluctuations.
Yes, yes. The next slide is just an overview or repeat of the actual changes that are occurring in the rate structure, and you see the, the zero-dollar change relative to the basic plan, and then the other changes that we talked about in terms of increases between nine and thirty-six dollars depending upon the plan situation that the person has.
And again, Mayor and Counsel, just if you see that city contribution, it remains constant for every employee, and then the additional cost is, the employee picks up, so.
And that city contribution did go up six percent as well, so it is a shared increase that goes on in that regard. So now we get to our wellness program, which we are very proud to have, and I'm very pleased to have my colleague Kristen here, who manages and supports and leads and innovates in that program year after year. So we've got a 2021 Wellness Program enhancement that we're recommending to do for a COVID-19 vaccine wellness credit. This would be available to all active employees in the city who are encouraged to participate and opt into that program, to be able to receive a hundred dollars cash in their paycheck in January by getting the vaccine squared away between now, or they might already have done it, and that's great, and we really want them to enter into the program, but those that haven't had the vaccine, to have the opportunity to also be in the program before twelve-thirty-one. And then they would get that hundred-dollar credit in a paycheck in, in January as a wellness credit in that regard. We're also fast underway and in current implementation on our wellness program for 2022. It starts effectively November 1st, and the big news is we will have a new web technology platform that will support that wellness program. It will be with WebMD, replacing our current vendor, who is Sonic Boom, that, that has provided us with those services, and we're very thankful for those services over the last several years. The new program will also have some enhancements from an employee perspective in regards to all employees will be encouraged to participate in that platform and become engaged in that wellness program initiatives and activities during the course of the year. Those, of those employees who participate, who are also enrolled in our city medical plans, will be eligible to receive incentives and rewards for that activity that they engage in. And in addition, spouse and committed partners of those that are enrolled in the city's medical plan can also participate in the platform and participate in the rewards and incentives as well.
So let's give them an example. Today, an individual employee that would participate in the wellness program and get the maximum amount of points, kind of what's that incentive for them? And then what, adding this spouse or committed partner, how does that, what's the added incentive to that?
That's a very good lead-in to our next slide.
Oh, sorry.
Which talks about the, the rewards that are available. And so for each two-hundred-and-fifty points earned in the wellness program engagement and activities, a potential fifty-dollar debit, debit credit card is available for a maximum of four debit or credit cards a year, so two-hundred dollars' worth of cash rewards for, that would be one-thousand points. By also receiving that one-thousand points for your engagement and your activity, you would also be eligible to get a, a discount the following year off of your medical plan premiums, if in fact you're in the choice or the copay plan where you do pay premiums. That's a two-hundred-dollar award that's available. It's paid out in installments per paycheck, eight dollars and thirty-four cents, something in, in that vernacular, during the course of that next calendar year. But if the spouse under the new program is also able, they can achieve the same two-hundred dollars' worth of credit card incentives for their participation in the plan, and then they could also earn the two-hundred-dollar premium discount reimbursement to go towards the subscriber, their, their spouse's plan, because it has to come out, go into the employee's paycheck. So that employee who has the spouse who has contributed that thousand points would then have four-hundred dollars.
It doesn't go to the spouse, it still goes to the employee, but.
Yes, yes, goes to the employee. Yeah, we haven't figured a way to-
We're just clarifying how this works.
We haven't figured a way how to pay spouses, no. But it will go towards the employee's paycheck, and that would be four-hundred dollars, so essentially sixteen dollars and change per pay period instead of the eight dollars and change that's currently in place. And then there are other raffle prize opportunities and other recognitions for those high achievers that receive more than a thousand points in their program each year, and that, that will go forward as well. And with significant engagement in the programs that we, we like to see, or we've seen, and we've seen heavy participation in, and then I'm sure that Kristen has some new innovative products in line to put in place.
So, Jan or Kristen, just give examples of the types of programs we have today that employees can participate in to get these points. What are, what are, just kind of give a general sense of what those are.
So I, I'd like to defer to Kristen and have her tell us that. I think that would be, that would be for sure the, the best response.
Great, Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you. We, there's a number of opportunities for employees to earn points, and it, we really look at it as, where do we want employees to take more responsibility for their health or get excited to do more? And we've encouraged them by giving points for going to their primary care physician for an annual exam, getting annual screenings, mammographies, prostate screenings, things like that. We've also given them points for being, excuse me, being active, using a fit, a tracker of some kind, maybe taking some sort of wellness classes that we offer. We have a very robust program when it comes to our wellness programs, and it's not just for exercise and eating, it's for mental health, it's for stress management, financial well-being. So they have a lot of choices to participate and to actually, you know, support what their goals are as far as change goes. So there's a lot of different areas. People can go up to almost twenty-eight-hundred points if they did every single activity, and we have people that do. So we, our hope is always that the, the money gets them involved. If they're not super excited, it entices people in, but then we really hope over time that that intrinsic motivation kicks in, the culture changes with city employees, and people start to really get the benefit of just making these changes, so.
Thank you, Kristen, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Kristen, I think that's a great thing that you're doing to encourage healthy living among our employees. Now, can I go to your website to figure out, okay, I want to get involved in all this, what does an employee do in order to get all the information?
Good question, Councilmember Luna. What they do is, we have a really good marketing campaign to let employees know what's available. One way is through our internet, the Inside Mesa. There's, we have a nice big logo and a click-and-go to, that'll take them directly to the platform to access the information. We, we send out a Live Well email every two weeks to let all employees know what's happening and where to go. And then we, we, before COVID, went in-person frequently, and now virtually, to different department meetings to promote activities that are going on. And then we have a large network, about sixty-plus employees who volunteer to sit on our Wellness Champions Committee, and they also are the grassroots efforts to get communication out to employees. So we have a lot of different areas that we market, and, and a lot of it, too, is word-of-mouth. Employees tell each other, you know, I took this class, I loved it, it helped me so much. And so again, that's that cultural change that we're trying to, to see in place over the course of time.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Mayor and Counsel, last but not least, on our wellness program, we continue to have available our leading-edge Health and Wellness Center, our onsite location that's centrally located within Mesa, that allows all employees and covered dependents who are in our medical plans to use those facilities and services with contracted medical professionals. They're delivering quality, accessible primary and preventive care services, and it's free of charge to that member or person when they use those services. It's a very well-received program, high utilization, and we're really, really fortunate to have that available to us and to our employees.
Currently, they are providing for non-symmetrical COVID testing. It's appointment, you have to still sign up, and, but that has been, they, they've assisted us in so many ways when we've actually had, they were able to help us have onsite, well, they are onsite, but actually at Nissel Plaza for, I don't know how many weeks we did that, Terry, where we had rapid testing.
Several months, yeah.
So they assisted with that, and now, once that kind of slowed down, we've been able to move it over to the, to the Wellness Center itself physically. And so it's been a great to have a medical service as part of our contract that are just for our employees, and so it's, it's been one of the great benefits for employees that are enrolled in our plans.
Very well-received benefit as well. So now we'll get to open enrollment, which is where we deliver all this good information about the 2022 programs. Open enrollment will be October 6th through October 20th. It will be a passive enrollment, as it has been in the past, meaning that only if you want to make a change to a benefit program or who's covered in the program, and/or if you want to enroll in our flexible spending accounts, because those are required to be re-enrolled or newly enrolled every year under IRS provisions. But the employees will be able to use our benefits website link that's in Inside Mesa to get to Eben Mesa, which is our proprietary, and we're very proud to present enrollment tool for employees to be able to use to get their enrollments in place for the new year. All of the information, updated guides, other communications, our 2022 plan document, and any other required documents, all of that will be updated in our web, benefits website before the end of this month, so it's ready and able to go for our open enrollment period. At, during the open enrollment period, we of course like to have our Wellness and Benefits Fair, and we're very pleased to report that we will have it back in person this year at the Mesa Convention Center on October 7th. That, that occasion or event, we are allowing for extra spacing within the, within the facility, sanitation stations, masks will be personal preference, but we will have them available for those that are volunteering, et cetera, if they should choose to use them. And that Benefits Fair will be available from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on October 7th. It will have all of the things that we've come to know and love and appreciate, including employees and retirees being welcomed to the occasion. Employees will receive a hundred wellness points for their attendance, at least if they choose to notify us of their attendance, they can get their hundred wellness points added as well. There'll be multiple benefit plan vendors, including all of the new benefit vendors that I mentioned to you previously on the prescription drug side of the equation, and our Navia Benefit Solutions for flexible spending. We'll have wellness events and demonstrations, employee network vendors, information giveaways and raffles, assisted enrollment is the big sort of banner with regard to this. So employees will be able to get their enrollment process done and completed, or get information right there onsite at our- done and completed, or get information right there onsite at our computer kiosk location within the convention center. We'll also have the I Love Mesa van out front for people to be able to do that outside if they want, and get their enrollments squared away right there on the spot. And it will be assisted by other volunteers or benefits staff, excuse me, staff, to provide them with information. Then most importantly this year, as it has been in past years, we will have flu shots available, and we will also have COVID-19 vaccinations available. These will be fire-medical administered, and we really appreciate the support and the just wonderful service levels that Fire Medical has been able to provide. No appointments will be required for those flu shots. It will be a first-come, first-served, and we do recommend that people recognize that if they're getting the COVID-19 vaccination, that you need to be able to stay present for about 30 minutes thereafter for the routine monitoring that goes on there. We'll also have the appointment-only, except for the occasional walk-in if there's been a no-show, mammography and POP POP screening for the prostate cancer screening. Those mobile vehicle units will be outside on the plaza level and available with appointments for people to get those screening activities taken care of right there on the spot. And then last but not least, but always important, food and beverage trucks will be out there, hopefully a little bit earlier than the actual occasion gets underway, and people can take advantage of those activities as well.
Question on the vaccinations. Have we, and I should know this already, but are boosters part of the plan right now? And if so, when are we going to start administering boosters to our employees?
Mayor, there hasn't been any guidance to be able to do that at this point, but we've committed, and I don't see fire here, but Mary and Michelle are in conversations, obviously, with the county, so at the time that that becomes a program that we're allowed to provide, and I'm sure it will be a similar sequence to what we've seen in the past, we've committed that, just like we did on the vaccines, we would step up and be in a position to distribute that to city employees and make that convenient. But at this time, that, I don't think, I saw something this morning that, I don't think that's been approved yet by even the FDA, unless I think it's like immune-compromised individuals, but the broader population, I don't think that's been approved at that point. But when, if and when it does happen, we'll certainly step up and be prepared to help. I'm also thinking, just based on the kind of way things are out today, the distribution of that vaccine, of being able to get vaccine boosters may be more widespread than it was, you know, before we had to go to large. Either way, we will, just like the flu shot, we will make it available and convenient for our employees to get that.
Another question. When does the Cigna contract come up for reconsideration? When do we go to market to find that vendor?
Will be in the last year of that contract, Mayor, next year. And so at the beginning of next year, we will also start the RFP process for the following year, 1/1 of 23, to determine what's the city's best opportunity for medical plan administration.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Council, any other, I'm sorry, ladies, were you done with your presentation?
Done. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. I had a question. Are we doing any COVID testing during this time if an employee comes in?
Well...
If they have some, if they needed to be tested?
Well, we have non-symptomatic COVID testing right now.
We have symptomatic COVID testing that is by appointment that they are actually doing in the parking lot of the Wellness Center.
We do both.
But we also have, we've offered two days a week where we have non-symptomatic, it can be, it could be, you just want to go in and get the testing done just to check it out, you've traveled someplace or such. It could be that you come in close contact with some individuals, or it could also be that you have a positive in your household. You may not be displaying symptoms, but you want to make sure that you're safe and get that testing. So we have that as well.
And Terry, we are offering the rapid test. Is that correct?
Yes, we are offering the rapid test.
So I know, yeah, there's other testing you can get, and sometimes that can take days, I've heard, or at least a day or more. So the rapid testing results are with, what, 30 minutes?
Within 30 minutes, correct.
And where are those being done at?
At the Wellness Center.
At the Wellness Center.
Okay. If you have symptoms, it's in the parking lot, right?
Exactly. Symptomatics are in the parking lot.
And if it's non-symptomatic, they allow you to, you can set up an appointment and come into the little conference room, yeah.
So my second question is, maybe I missed it, but if an employee has no changes to their medical plan, does it just roll over? Or do they have to sign or check bonds?
There was a term, these passive enrollment.
Passive enrollment, yes.
Okay, that's where I heard that.
Passive enrollment. So if a person does not want to make any change, then what they have today will just roll over to the year.
It just rolls over.
The one exception, of course, is the flexible spending account. That is something that somebody needs to enroll in every year regardless. There is no rollover in that sense of the enrollment.
Okay. But the amount of that's changed in the flexible spending account?
The amount, it's not changed, it's sitting at, on healthcare spending, it's $2,750, $2,750. That is not a change from current year. But in terms of the actual rollovers that can happen within those accounts, yes, that has changed for this year. It's normally $550 on the healthcare spending side is the allowable rollover, but because of recent legislative changes that occurred during 2021 and '20, we are enabled, under the IRS code, to put full rollovers in for those employees who have more money in their account than they anticipated using.
Good.
But that's just for one more year.
Good. Well, that should be highlighted, too, for employees.
Yes.
Because if, I know I've been caught in that gap, too, of not spending it when I should, and only be able to roll over the $550.
Correct, yes.
But like you say, it's only for one more year.
Yeah, it's only for one more year, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
And I know all of our employees value what you do a lot. Mesa's a great place to work, in large part due to your efforts. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Next item on our agenda is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. And I know you've all been very active, even since our last meeting on Thursday, but who would like to go first?
I'll go.
Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Anna here. So I want to thank Anna. We are producing some videos on Hispanic Heritage Month.
Anna is here.
Oh, hey, Anna. So I want to thank Anna for her help on that. It's running on Channel 11. And our first one that we've interviewed is Isaias Garcia Romero from Environmental Sustainable Management and Sustainability. So that'll be featured on Channel 11 as well as on my website, so, in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. Yesterday, we had a Parks meeting, footprint for Parks of the Future, right? And thank you Andrea and Mark for being there, as well as Scott. We had real good attendance over at, on East Mesa, so thank you for that. And it's a great thing. All you do is look at what you like about city parks and what would you like in the future, and then you place a red dot or a green dot. In my case, I put a lot of green dots, so thank you for making that available for us. And then several of us attended a memorial service, but I'll go ahead and let the mayor speak on that last night.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'll accept that invitation. There were several of our council last night that participated in the annual memorial service for Balbar Singh Sodi. I think we all recall the horrible tragedy of 20 years ago. 9/11, of course, we commemorated last Saturday, but then on 9/15, 20 years ago, Mesa, Arizona, very unfortunately, was the focus of worldwide attention when a member of the Sikh community, Mr. Sodi, was murdered in front of his convenience store in East Mesa in retaliation, you know, by a disturbed person for the terrorist attacks. That's not a distinction that we're proud of, but it has been an opportunity for us to gather every year to talk about community and about reaching out to people who are of different faiths in our community, and it's really turned into a very positive thing. And so last night, for the 20th anniversary of that event, it was a particularly poignant celebration. There was Congressman Stanton was there, there was a representative from the White House. It was very well-attended and very moving. So I know we were all pleased and honored to be there. I'm particularly pleased that the former mayor, Keno Hawker, was there. Keno was the mayor when this event occurred in our community, and he was very touched by it as well, I know. So, yeah, I'm sure every member of our council that participated will tell you that it was very significant, and this will continue. Every year, we'll continue to use this as an opportunity to strengthen the ties in our faith community and in our community at large. But still a very solemn and sobering celebration. Julie?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really enjoyed this ceremony last night. I'm going to cry. It was just full of love and kindness and forgiveness, and really moving, and what our community needs. So I am really grateful that I was able to go to that last night. And I also wanted to give a huge, massive shout-out to our Mesa Police Department for handling absolute chaos yesterday when there was a bomb threat at Mesa High, and 3,350 kids had to be bused to another high school. And they were literally there from 8:30 in the morning till at least 6 o'clock at night, helping at both of the schools with making sure everyone was safe, and traffic, and angry parents, and all the things. So I wanted to just say a huge thank you. I know that our whole community is very grateful for their service yesterday.
Any other comment? I'm sorry, Mr. Luna?
No, I just have an announcement. There will be a pod for COVID vaccines at Fremont Junior High, so living in East Mesa. They are giving boosters for immunocompromised individuals, but they're also giving the flu shot. And if you haven't had your COVID vaccine, you're free to attend. That's from 8:00 to 11:00 at Fremont Junior High, which is located on Power, south of Brown Road.
Mr. Thompson?
Just want to also give kudos to PD. They made two major busts on massage parlors in our community this week. Made an arrest from the owner-operator in Gilbert, served three search warrants on not only her house, but also the two massage parlors, and froze three bank accounts for a total of $1.2 million. So kudos to PD and all the work and effort they did, and thank you to my colleagues for passing the ordinance. I think that gives them another tool to help them fight this crime. So, thank you.
Good news. Council, Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, tonight at Hale Elementary, we have the public meeting regarding the Parks Master Planning and the Climate Action Plan. So we'd like to invite people over to 1425 North 23rd Street. That's east of Gilbert Road and north of Brown, up in that area at the elementary school.
It's where I went to elementary school.
Oh, that's why it's so special.
I'm a hero.
A Hale hero.
I'm a Hale hero.
Okay, got it. So anyway, if we can get the word out, we appreciate that.
All right. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to also contribute that there's a festival in Pioneer Park on Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00 PM called Masked Live, and is recognizing the Hispanic heritage. It's an annual event. It's lots of fun, music, food, performances. So take your family and enjoy a wonderful Sunday afternoon. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I plan on being there. That's going to be, always a great event. Anything else you'd like to share with this council? All right, next item on, Mr. Brady, can you update us on our next meeting schedule?
Yes, Mayor, just a reminder again, we'll have a council meeting, study session, council meeting on Monday, September 20th. So we'll see you then.
Okay, thank you. Our last item is to convene an executive session for our annual reviews of the city attorney and city manager. Is there a motion to convene the executive session? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you. That motion passes unanimously, and we'll convene an executive session.